Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting at Suyes Town Council, Monday, August the fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at nine AM in council chambers. So we'll call the meeting to order, and first is introduction of late items, and we do have one that we're going to put in here. We, all of council is going to UVCM in Victoria, Union of B.C. Municipalities next month, and the Small Communities Group has asked if anybody has anything to, they would like to add to the agenda, best practices or success stories, and I know Counselor Youngberg and I are going to that session, I'm not sure who else is, but we thought it might be a good idea to somehow bring up our school situation and either tell about a success story or look at, we're not quite sure how to deal with it yet, but we wanted to have a look at that. We just got an invitation to, to support that, so we're going to add that on to the agenda, would that be Business Three? Okay, thank you. So with that addition, could I have a, a motion, please, to accept the agenda? Thank you. Counselor King, Counselor Youngberg, all in favor? Thank you. And first on our list today is the delegation, and it's the Blessing Box, and we're happy to have Brenda Deroche, Gayhorn, and Jen Shields here to talk about this interesting project that they have for us. So are, would one of you like to come up to the microphone, or all of you, or how's that going to work?
I do the shortest.
Okay, thank you.
So right off the bat, we want to tell you that we're changing the name, because Blessing Box leads to kind of a Christian, so we've decided to change the name to The Giving Cupboard, that's kind of the name we came up with. Second thing is, we do not want to have any food items in our, in our box, because that leads to a lot of problems for contamination, you know, vandalism, all that kind of stuff. So when we were looking at all these ideas, there, there's many locations in the U.S., but there's only a few in Canada, so we kind of tossed around the idea, and we would like to keep ours more for traveling, people traveling through, and low-income families that might be short till payday, or might be short till, you know, till they get their monthly check that helps them out. So in our minds, what we're thinking is more personal hygiene products, and then from there doing, you know, the odd package of pens, pencils, for kids, you know, families sometimes run short. Pens, pencils, stickers, paper, envelopes that are pre-stamped, so people traveling through might need help to send a little letter home. I know people don't do that that much anymore, but that's kind of where we were, where we were thinking of, and then you can go into the little cats and dogs, little toys, we don't want treats, we don't want anything like that, we've been asked that already, and we don't want to do anything to do with food whatsoever. If we do get donations of food, it'll just go onto the food bank, or it'll go to the South Economic Women's in Need Shelter, or SPCA, you know, depending what the item is. So what we're asking is for your blessing, and also, we had a meeting last week, and we were just kind of walking around and deciding, and we were thinking, we would like it in a central location, but not like right out front where people would be shy to stop by and take something or put something in. So right in front of the, beside the art gallery, there's the two big trees, right?
Two trees, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and we were thinking right in between the two trees, so we would need council's blessing to, you know, to allow that, so I don't know if there's a bylaw that needs to happen, I don't know, we don't know the specifics of what exactly would have to happen to have it installed there. So we would ask the town's permission and their help to have it installed. We haven't even started building the box, there's a couple people in town that will build the box for us, so we're looking at two feet by two feet by about eighteen inches wide, and then it's attached to a strong post, like a four-by-four post, and cemented into the ground. So that's what we're asking, we're just, you know, waiting for your answer, because if you don't think it would work in our community, then we're not going to do it. It's just something that we, you know, all three of us thought it was a great idea, and we kind of went, well, we should do it, we should do it, so we want to do it. So that's basically it. I don't think there is anything other than, than that, but we just want to make sure that you understand, we don't want food items in there. Going into fall, you know, mini gloves, there's seniors in town that want to knit hoops and, you know, dish cloths, that kind of stuff, so that's what we were thinking. My first response to Gay was vandalism, but that's to be expected, look what happened with the piano situation, but, you know, I think we can make it work. Gay lives close to town, Jen, I'm in town every day, and between other people that have showed interest, you know, we'll stop by and check the box on a daily basis. Donations will be kept between the three of us in our homes, and we'll just keep restocking it. We haven't put the word out anywhere yet, because we want your feelings before we do that. So nobody, not very many people know what we're doing, so.
So it would, I'm sure council has questions about it, and first of all, I, I thank you very much for coming up with this great idea. You know that there's the, is it the Kids', Communities for Kids. that's doing the one with books, and they've got the okay to do that, but I, it hasn't been put up yet, I think it was going to go down somewhere near the Splash Park. So I'm glad to hear that food is not involved, because that would trigger a ton of other things, interior health and, and all that. So Ken, I'm just going to turn it over to and let council ask questions about this, and then I believe if we decided to move forward, would have to go to, staff would have to look at and bring back a report about what could happen, where it could happen, and all of those kinds of things.
And we would just ask the media not to report anything until we hear back from you, because if we get hundreds of donations coming in once it's in the media.
It's too late, this is on Granicus, so it's already on the media.
We would ask the media to really put it out there until we hear back from them.
Or perhaps you could talk to them after and suggest that they, you know, say that this is a, an idea that's being looked at.
Yeah.
Yeah. Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I actually don't have a question. I, I like seeing people come up with initiatives like this, and similar to the piano where people within the community come up with something that would be to benefit the community and take responsibility for it, so I like it. I guess I do have a question, what happened with vandalism in the piano?
I don't know if it was actually vandalism, I know the first couple nights, when, was it you down there, Gay, and there was a couple people mentioned that they were worried about vandalism down there, just by certain people hanging around.
I, I think it's worked out well, I don't think there's been.
Yeah, any people I've talked to since have been positive, yeah.
So, no, all I wanted to say was, no, thank you, I think it's a great idea.
And Gay takes a lot of it, because she wanted to do it, and then we all ganged up with Gay.
Counselor King?
I can see why Gay can be shy sometimes.
Very.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple questions, I think it's a great idea, I think changing the name is an excellent idea. Do you see this all year round, especially in the winter with the cold and the items you have in it?
Yes.
And do you have a sort of a second location, possibly, or an idea for a second location?
Absolutely. We would, we would love to entertain a second location, providing the first one is acceptable and it's, it's well-used, and certainly seasonal is a great deal, because we have plants for that, mitts and hats and so on.
I didn't mean a second box, I meant a different location for the first box, an alternative location.
No, not right now.
The only other one we spoke about was the different, perhaps, I don't think it would work as well, attached to the wall of the little gazebo thing here. The reason we picked Town Hall is because, you know, people tend to not congregate here as much as they do, for example, on the beach, or, you know, we were trying to pick a location where it wouldn't just be emptied every day.
Yes, mostly because of the foot traffic in the summer, and also because people tend to be downtown, be in the core area of any town, whatever its size, and so for that reason, having it in a core area just made more sense, and not having it directly on the street or just walking by grab, so, you know, there's a stigma attached to taking something you don't pay for, we're all brought up that we must pay, but there are a lot of people in this town, in this community, that goes beyond our boundaries, that don't have the money to just necessarily go and pick up whatever they want, and sometimes you don't want to buy a whole package of something, but a Band-Aid when you need it is really, really necessary, so having it just off the street a little bit kind of takes the embarrassment factor away, you know, like, oh my God, has somebody seen me? I need something. No, we don't want to create the stigma of that, so we haven't an alternative location, there just didn't seem to be one in Town Hall, and the park here, and the fire hall, and the town planer, I just think it's a really, really good idea, the location. You may not agree with me, and that's okay, we could talk.
I didn't say I just didn't agree, I just was curious, you had an alter location, because if it gets that much used, you're going to create a big path in the grass.
Well, that would, that would give the groundskeepers in this lovely town another opportunity to do some really great work that they did down the, the other street that they just finished, they did a fantastic job in Zara Street.
Absolutely.
Really the way to go, rather than watering grass unnecessarily.
Okay. I think Counselor Rhodes, you were next.
Thanks, Mayor McCordough, yeah, great idea, and good for you guys for stepping up and promoting this. Just one suggestion, the size, two by two by one and a half seems quite small to me, if you're going to use that area and put a post in, does it not seem quite small? I mean, that's only like.
We were thinking two by two, and then eighteen inches is what most of them are, and then a shelf or two inside. If you get it too big, you've got to have more stuff in there, and we're not putting food items, so if you think of not having food items in there, we think that that side should be sufficient.
Yeah. Just a suggestion, seems awfully small to me, so let have a, a cupboard that you can see the stuff inside of it, similar to the one that's in the picture.
And we've also asked, we kind of put it out on Facebook a little bit, looking for cupboards for donation, because the fellow that had offered to build it for us is very busy right now, so we've kind of just put that, because any kind of cupboard we could make do, and just change the door and put like a plexiglass.
Yeah.
But then, you know, you have to be careful for safety and stuff, so we wouldn't want glass, glass, it would have to be like a plexiglass.
Yeah, good for you guys for stepping up.
Thank you.
Counselor Youngberg.
Great idea, I hope that it helps a lot of people in the area, because I think I agree with you, there's often people walking around just needing some little thing, and they either don't have the money or don't know where to go to get it. So good idea, and hopefully two by two by eighteen will work.
Maybe to start with. Can I ask, how are you going to pay for this? Is it, is it donations of, of things that would go inside the cupboard, and, but you also have a startup cost, because obviously wherever you put it, you're going to have to put a pretty sturdy post in the ground, and, and, you know, so it looked like there would be a startup cost.
There will be, the other thing we looked into, and we haven't found it again, did you find that grant? There is a grant available for a five hundred dollar community project, and we saw it like a month ago, and we haven't been able to find it again, so we're still looking for that, and that may be an option, but if that's not an option for us, there's a few people that, I mean, it's not going to cost that much to build a, a box, a cupboard.
Right.
As far as keeping it stocked, we think once the, once the word's out there, we'll have no problem. This is a giving community, and then, you know, you get the different associations, and we don't think we'd have a problem.
Well, thank you very much for your enthusiasm on this, and we certainly appreciate, you know, having you come and, and explain this to us, and we will certainly get back to you if we have any questions. Mr. Remanko, is there any, anything that you need?
I just need a resolution of direction to bring back a report to probably the next meeting of council, you know, we'll, the only thing that I would think we'd have to do is you'd probably have to engage the Arts Council to see what their perspective is, they, they lease the property, so, you know.
Sure, and, and if there's any other information that you need in order to put, like zoning and, and the costs, no, we're okay with that.
We're okay, and I, I think we've, they've done a good job describing what their project is, now it's just a matter of bringing back and getting a formal direction through a resolution at a regular meeting.
Is there a sign by law?
No.
Is there any, do you have any idea of the grant that they're, that they're referring to, and, or is there somebody at town here that might know of that?
I'm not familiar with the grant of five hundred dollars, we, you know, part of our report can speak to, I, I don't know off the top of my head if we have any money left into granting aid, you know, we, we would look into that.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Campbell?
I think it might be a neat idea, when you were talking to the Arts Council here, is, there might be an opportunity for some help there, too, with crayons and paint brushes and things that kids can use, because I know they're always encouraging kids to get into the arts and, and be creative, so it might be a neat opportunity, they've always been very generous in the community that way, so.
So just for clarification, the items that go into the box have to go through you first, or do people just drop them off?
Look, and we have, we actually haven't really discussed that, but in a lot of locations, people just walk by and, and put it in, but we'd have to certainly monitor it.
I think that might be a good idea, especially for a while, to make sure that you didn't have things in there that you didn't want.
You know, people are saying granola bars and all that, and that's a good idea, but they're going to be tampered with, we can't, we can't get into foods at all.
No, I agree. Okay, so you need a, a motion or a resolution to, to look into this, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Youngberg?
To bring back a report to the next council meeting.
Okay, yeah, thank you very, all in favor? Thank you. CJ, did you have a question?
No, I was going to make the motion.
Sorry, oh, okay, thank you, thank you very much.
We might want to ask the council to help you sign it, maybe move forward.
Don't go and talk to the Arts Council yet till we get a, yeah, yeah, not, yeah, we need to have a, a report from council first, or from a, a staff, too.
And good luck trying to curtail our, our very aggressive press in this community.
They're both sitting there, so maybe you better talk to them and find out what it is that you, that you'd like to have.
We just don't want to be bombarded with donations until we know it's.
Absolutely, and I'm sure they would help you arrange that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is Business One, Conflict of Interest Regulations. Ms. Van Veenen.
Thank you. So a two thousand and thirteen ruling by the B.C. Court of Appeal in Schlenker versus Torgrimson clarified that a local government-elected official who is also a director of a society or corporation has an indirect pecuniary interest in local government matters relating to the expenditure of local government funds to that society or corporation. The court found that the conflict of interest provisions in Section one hundred and one oh one of the community charter, which is attached, apply to the council member, must not participate in the matter. The province has recently clarified how this will impact council members appointed to boards or societies by council. The exception to the conflict of interest is only valid if the council member was appointed, and this would be by resolution, by their local government to serve on the board of directors of a society or a corporation that their local government has incorporated to provide a service to that local government, and the subject matter discussed by the council of the local government is a specified interest in relation to the same entity. A specified interest is defined as: an expenditure of public funds to or on behalf of the entity, an advantage benefit grant or other form of assistance to or on behalf of the entity, an acquisition or disposition of an interest or right in real or personal property that results in an advantage, benefit, or disadvantage to or on behalf of the entity, or an agreement respecting a matter described in the three paragraphs above. For an example to the above, to make it clear to understand, I will use Destination OCS Board as an example. The council member sitting on the DO board as an appointed, appointment of council formally by resolution does not have to recuse themselves when council is considering funding for DO or lease agreements, et cetera. However, there are exceptions to that that are discussed further in this report. The new exceptions to the conflict of interest will not apply if, one, there is a specified in, where a specified interest relating to an entity is discussed, and the local government official sits on the board of that entity but was not appointed to that position by his or her local government, and where the local government official was appointed by his or her local government to sit on a board of an entity, but the decision being discussed is outside the scope of the specified interest as described in the regulation. In other words, the regulations allow elected, elected local government officials to be appointed by the local government to certain society and corporate boards without the risk of disqualification due to financial conflict interest, only if the subject matter discussed at a meeting is a specified interest. Even if a council member has been appointed to, by council to a board he or she sits on, there still remains a potential for conflict of interest where the council member otherwise receives a personal pecuniary benefit as a result of a council decision relating to the society or corporation. For example, if there were ever a time that a council member is appointed to a board or society where a stipend is paid, and the board or society came, come to council for approval for an increase to that stipend, the council member should recuse themselves from the discussion and the vote as it is a direct pecuniary, personal pecuniary interest. A council member sitting on a society or corporation board without having been appointed by council to this position continues to be subject to conflict of interest arising from divided loyalty between the council member's loyalty to both the entity or the society and their local government. Due to this recent ruling and the clarification by the province on council member appointments to board by council, it was felt that it would be a good time to review some of the other conflict of interest situations and the legislation itself. There are several, several interest instances where conflict or perceived conflict of interest could occur. Some examples are: one, a council member as a director of a society or corporation. If a council member is a director not appointed by council for a society or corporation that may be looking for funding, development approvals, or agreements of any kind, they should recuse themselves from any and all discussions on the matter when it is in front of council. Two, a council member as an owner of property, the council member would directly benefit from a development or project that is being considered by council, including but not limited to a rezoning of any property owned by a council member or a rezoning that could affect the value of the council member's adjacent property. Three, council member as an agent for a group or individual, if the council member represents a group or individual looking for funding, development, development, or assistance of any kind from council. Financial conflicts, a council member receives a gift or personal financial benefit when sitting on any society or corporate board still remain as potential conflicts under the new regulations, and these issues should be carefully looked, looked at and legal advice obtained if unsure as to conflict. Receipt of gifts, council members and staff should not receive gifts of any kind from developers or groups that are looking for council approval or support, although these may not be perceived as actual conflict, they could be perceived as encouragements to look favorably toward their requests, and at the very least, could be unethical. Section one oh five of the community charter, and I've, I've just noted that, you can refer to that at another date, but that deals with restrictions on accepting gifts. The above are just a few examples of what could be considered a conflict of interest. The basic rule for council members is, if you even question whether you are in conflict, you should probably declare that you are. It is always best to err on the side of caution rather than risk a claim of conflict. The following statement is from an information bulletin from the Ministry of Community Services regarding conflict of interest, and it states, "In broad terms, the council member has a nonpecuniary conflict of interest if the council member's interest in the matter is immediate and distinct from the public interest. It can be reasonably determined that the member's private interest in the matter will influence his or her vote on the matter. The member or one of his or her relations or associates stands to realize a personal benefit from a favorable decision on the matter, and the potential benefit to the member is not financial in nature. The key consideration for members is whether a reasonable person would conclude that the decision-making could be influenced or affected by the connection, such that a private interest could conflict with a member's public duties. When in doubt, it is advised that members err on the side of caution and declare any real or perceived nonpecuniary conflict of interest. The concept of pecuniary and nonpecuniary conflict of interest is constantly evolving in common law. When faced with uncertainty, municipalities and council members are encouraged to seek legal advice." And then there are some exceptions to the conflict of interest that haven't been stated, they can be found in Section one oh four of the community charter, which are included on the report, and this report was just provided for information for council.
Thank you very much, Ms. Van Veenen, I, I think the, the key thing here is, when in doubt, ask if, if you are in conflict, and probably if you're unsure, then ask a legal expert or declare that you are, just to be, yeah. Anybody else have any concerns, Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough, well, this has been a, a subject that I've always really enjoyed being engaged in, and in a purely sarcastic way, thank you very much for the province for, once again, complicating this matter even more. It's incredible how, how these things get downloaded on us periodically, and, and once again, it may seem like a very small thing, but when you're a counselor or an elected official, it is important, and I, I just, you know, my personal beliefs always have been, I don't take anything from anybody under any circumstances, and if you think you're in conflict, you probably are, and, and that's always been the way that I've done it, and it seemed to have worked pretty good, although even with those very simple beliefs, you still get caught once in a while, and it just, I don't know, just making a, a simple thing so complicated, it kind of irritates me sometimes, and where this stuff comes from, but it's good advice, great, great, great report, I'm glad you laid it out very simply for us, and it's just stunning what some elected officials do, and the reasons why we have these rules are, are very important, you know, because a lot of people do take advantage of it and benefit personally, and I've always been totally against that, so, yeah, thanks a lot, good report.
Yeah. Counselor Youngberg?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for this, Jeanette, very good, very informative, too.
And it's a good idea to have this, to be reminded of this every once in a while, I know that we have to fill out forms on a yearly basis, which reminds us at that time, and we have to state if we've received anything from anybody, so there are checks and balances in place, but it's always good to, to have a reminder. Okay, thank you. And the next item is Gyro Park grand opening. Mr. Remanko.
Thank you. A significant amount of work has been done to complete Phases A and B of Gyro Park, including this work, with the construction of a new washroom concession building, creation of a plaza area, and the walkway to the beach. Funding of these projects included general revenues, parks' development cost charges, and resort municipality initiative funding. The most significant amount of funds was contributed by the resort municipality initiative funds. A significant amount of work and community improvement resulted from the reconstruction of Seventy-Fourth Avenue from Eighty-Ninth Street to Highway Three. This project was funded from community works funds and development cost charges. It is important to celebrate community successes through community events that function as ground openings of major facilities. Council was approached in spring with a recommendation to hold a community celebration of the Gyro Park facility, however, timing and workload didn't allow for spring or summer opening. Council recommended an early fall event in the midweek to ensure that it was more of a community celebration. If there is direction to plan this event, there will be a need for a small formal program that outlines the history of the project and recognizes the contributors to the project. A significant information, invitation of dignitaries may be, invitation to Shurri Bond, Minister of Jobs, Tourism, Skills Training, MLA Linda Larson, and past council members that were involved in the initial stages of development. Consideration can be given to include a celebration of the completion of Seventy-Fourth Avenue construction with a recognition of the community works fund, gas tax funding that provided for that development. Activities could include a small dedication program, music in a park, and a community picnic with council members serving food and beverages. So in terms of implications, community celebrations of successful projects assist in developing community spirit, organizational community services would be asked to organize the events at Gyro Park location, and administration staff will organize the dedication events, invitations, and press releases. Budget funds for this event exist within current budget. Council is asked to find a date in the weeks of September twelfth and nineteenth, or a date in early October. The options being presented to council are, one, provide direction to the administration to bring this report and recommendations from this discussion to the August fifteenth council meeting for formal debate, direction, and date. Council seeks out additional information and provides direction to bring to council for a decision at a later date. So basically, the expenditure money, so it should. at a later date. So, basically, the expenditure money, so it should come through the formal council process. It's, it's just a matter of a discussion in around having a grand opening of our Gyro Park facilities, and perhaps a celebration also of, of the, you know, the, the work that was done on 74th Avenue. Significant contributions of provincial dollars to both, both projects. Resort municipality initiative really asks that there be celebrations of this nature, and, and some type of public acknowledgement of funds that support this project, especially given the fact that this year, you know, the RMI funding ends at, end of March 2017, and a lot of initiatives happening at the political level to try and continue this program. So, I turn it over to council, whether there is a desire to, to move in this direction. Any comments or suggestions?
Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Well, we began talking about, as you indicated in the report some time ago, and I'm very, very supportive of this. Not so much of, you know, 74th Avenue. I mean, it was a great project, and people have been very complimentary of it. But I don't want to talk about it too much, so, you know, I may be in conflict. With regard to the Gyro Park facility, you can put that squarely in the category of being a big ticket item in our, in our community, not only from the size and the, and the expenditures, but just from a community development thing. It's been a, a great thing. It's been well-received. And I would be very supportive of, of inviting the provincial minister that's responsible for the RMI, and, you know, putting together, you know, a, a good, solid thank you to them at, at this type of thing. And of course, inviting members of the community would be very, very good. And just have it, I like the time of year, you know, it's just slightly past the tourist season, so chances are, we're going to get local residents out there. Yeah, I just, I'm really, really supportive of it. I think it's a great idea. And I think that we should do, you know, a, a good, solid, you know, professional type of celebration down there.
Good. Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I, I agree with Counselor Rhodes. I'm absolutely in favor of doing this, and would make the motion that council provides direction to the administration to bring this report and recommendations from the discussion to the August 15th council meeting for formal direction and date.
Are you seconding that? Okay. So, this will be brought back this afternoon?
Yes. So, it gives council a chance to check their, their calendars. Trying to find a date is always difficult. We, the, the, we didn't go for that last week in September because the majority of council will be away at UBCM, so one of those weeks, or in early October.
And maybe useful for the staff report coming is, if possible, I'd like to take part in, in the planning process, having some event experience.
Okay.
And I'm thinking, too, that the time of day makes a kind of a difference. And so, are you seeing this like a five to seven, so people after work, or during the day? And my reason for, for my concern is that by October, it tends to get kind of dark. And so, I would suggest if we were going to, to have it, that the September dates might fit in a little bit better and might be a little bit more, you know, barbecue weather.
Yeah. We, you know, we haven't, we haven't gone to, you know, any, any degree of planning. Well, we'll turn, turn it over to our, our event planner.
Event planner. So, we, so the motion is to bring it back to this afternoon for discussion?
This afternoon's meeting.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. It was seconded, Counselor Youngberg. Yeah. And I believe that's, oh, next thing on the agenda, of course. Yeah, one more item. So, the, the next item is UBCM. Small Communities has asked that if we have anything that we would like to present, and I'm not quite sure what that exactly means, either best practices or success stories from small communities. And so, I think we kind of need to bring this, this out for discussion and see what we might like to do, if anything, and how we would go about it. So, Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So, I've attended many of these small community forums, and a lot of the presentations are made, are made by representatives from communities that are intimately involved in whatever the story is that they're up there telling. And don't take this the wrong way. It's just a word of caution. Usually, they're, they're put together very, very well. There's a presentation usually by PowerPoint that goes along with it. And almost everyone that I've seen has been very inspirational for me. I can remember the one from Sanich, on the young kid that started the downhill mountain biking course. He took it, he went, he was eight years old, and he took his story to, I believe, the parks person in that community. And now it's a world-class facility, and they've honored this young boy who's lived through it right from the very beginning. And, you know, just wonderful inspirational things. So, if we're going to do it, it's a little bit more than just going up there and commenting on, on our success. There has to be a story and a, and a plot, and, you know, some graphics and PowerPoint stuff that usually goes along with it, so.
Sounds like a lot of...
I think it was just discussion.
Go ahead, ladies.
I understood. I understood that appeal, just to be a discussion paper.
Yeah. Counselor Campbell?
I, I think there's, now that I know it, there's, there's examples in the community. And one that comes to mind would be one that former councillor Michael Ryan spearheaded, which was the refugee program, which saw a lot of community involvement and a great success story in the community. So, I think we look at things like that and maybe, I think that's a well-documented one.
And that's happened in many communities, too. So, not, but, you know, the, the fact that we have a school open now and we, and we didn't is, is kind of a, a success story, I think, for the town of Asuias. But I'm not quite sure how to, what the suggestions are to present this.
I think that, that's a very well-documented one. I think, in my opinion, bringing something like this to, to a venue like that would be something that, that we initiated and started as a community and saw some impact. I think the, the process with the school closing and reopening was well-documented through, through the entire province, for sure, if not through the country.
Yes, it was, through the country. Yeah, and, and you're quite right. I mean, is there any, do you have, have you had any, you know, background in, in doing something like this?
Yeah, there'd be a need to, to develop a formal presentation. You know, in terms of PowerPoint, I'm, I'm sure there's lots of pictures around of, of crowds and, you know, community meetings. And I think there's a story to be told here. Certainly, a story that many small communities will latch on to, you know. And I think the community and council did take some very, some, you know, some initiatives that, you know, resulted in success. Some people may not agree with them in that room, and I think we have to be prepared relative to feedback and the, in the question and answer period. I think there'll be some skepticism of our success based on, you know, the, the political end that occurred in terms of the final decision. But in the long and short of the, of the matter, I think there's a story to be told, and one that will certainly send a message, I think, and, and send a message also relative to the need to develop relationships between school boards and municipal councils. And I think that's a, a key element of that particular story is, you know, you, you know, what is the school to a community? And, and who's, the, the life of the school in whose hands is it really? Is it in the community's hands? And how the school boards are, you know, are, how are they linked to a part of the community, given their regional nature? So, I can help. We just need a, a member of council that's willing to present. I think that, that story needs to be told by a member of council. And I can assist with developing some type of presentation.
So, Counselor Youngberg?
My big interest in this small community forum from, I did attend it last year as well, is the fact that I, I think the message that I would like to get out is how school districts should be working with municipalities. And I just think that's a really key issue as far as the appeal to the other communities in the province. If we all work together and work with the provincial government and the Ministry of Education, we can accomplish this. The decisions to affect the economic development and benefit of a community by closing a high school when there was only one was just beyond comprehension. And I think that that word, you know, to get out to all the rest of the communities in the province would be my real sentiment about it, as well as how we brought the community together to be so committed to improving the relationship and the appeal to the school district that our community made.
So, could, is, I mean, I'm going to the small communities when Counselor Youngberg is.
I'm going to medium.
Medium?
I'm going to small.
And small. And, and Counselor Rhodes is staying here to look after the town, so that's a good thing.
And so am I, too.
Absolutely, they do. So, I think that that might be a good idea. Could perhaps the three of us that are going meet with you, or would it be easier just to have one person?
Well, I, I think the presenter is, is one person. You know, anybody who wants to have input, I think what we would do is we'd kind of sketch out a, a draft of what are the key, key communication areas, and then build a presentation from there.
Okay.
And, and so, and then grab some photos from someplace that would, would, would support that. So, you know, everybody had, you know, Counselor Youngberg, if she is going to speak, she may have a different, you know, a methodology behind it. You know, so I think it would just be easiest if we did pull together and sit down and just take a look at what are the key elements that we want to be presented. And I, I, first of all, it has to be accepted, so we have to submit the talk, the topic.
Yes.
And, and then...
And then they would say, yes, go ahead and do something, and you've got 15 minutes or something like that. Yeah.
And what's, excuse me, what's the timeframe?
The, well, the...
No, what is the presentation ready?
I don't know how long the, we have, I don't know when they'll give us a response back, but we have to complete this form by August 26th.
Oh, that's what I was after.
Okay. And I think it's a three-hour agenda that day, so there probably is, I think it's from nine to 12 or something like that. So, presumably, there's time for several people to present if they want. Counselor Rhodes, did you have a...
So, I was going to mention that, first off, I'm very supportive of this. I think there's a story to be told. And just, you know, from a personal point of view, I have two sisters that are teachers, and one in Nanaimo and one in Courtney. Talked to both of them this past weekend, and it wasn't so much about what we achieved. It was, their questions were all about the community engagement and how this community became so energized and, and sustained that energy throughout the whole process right to the end. So, I think that would be a key element to add in there as well. I mean, what, what this community did was just outstanding. I mean, I would rival, you know, I'd rival our commitment here to any city in North America. When you proportion it down to a per capita basis, it's incredible what happened here. And, yeah, just interesting that it's a big topic in Nanaimo and Courtney. They are very, very informed. They understand all of the mechanics. What they don't get is how this, how the energy was started in this community and how it was sustained. That's just a mystery to so many people. And, and that's a story in itself, you know, taking that message there as well.
I also think that council made several suggestions, which are, I'm sure there are people that, in terms of money, in terms of helping the school district. And I think that definitely, I've heard from a few people, that they, they said, how can you do that? That just, that's bizarre. You, that's, we didn't have to go that route. But I think those are the kinds of things that need to be added on there, too. Whether people agree with that or not, we were willing to commit, and that's, and that should be part of the story. My cousin who lives in Ottawa emailed me and said, because I had been interviewed by CBC, and he heard it in Ottawa, and it was the school issue. And so, it's not just local, it's not just B.C., it was Canada-wide. So, Counselor Youngberg, would you be interested in, in working with Mr. Menko in presenting this at UBCM? All right?
Sure. Just as long, yeah, as long as I have the input from everyone else as well.
Oh, oh, sure. You know, we can all, we'll, we'll let Mr. Menko put something together and, and see what we can find. And maybe Donna has some pictures. I'm sure there are lots of them around. We have all the letters and all of the...
I'm sure the press has got lots of pictures.
Absolutely, the press does. Okay, so, do you need a resolution then?
I think, yes, a resolution that would basically state that council has an interest in making a presentation to UBCM Small Talk Forum, and that we submit the, the, the school closure issue for presentation.
And that part will be done right away, to sort of get it in, and then we'll work on it. Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Okay. King Youngberg? All in favor? Thank you very much, everybody. And we need a resolution or a motion to close the meeting, please. Campbell Rhodes, all in favor. Thank you. Thank you.